Is that sound, sound correct?
For whom?
For, for either.
Okay.
A motion on the nominations.
Okay, I will entertain a motion on both nominations for approval.
We have to do it one at a time, right?
You could, I think you would just open it up, whoever, we've got two, two nominees and then uh, someone can make a motion to um, approve one of the nominees. Then we would need a second.
So I move to approve Mike McMillan.
Okay, Ms. Montenegro, approve, uh, makes motion to approve McMillan. Do I have a second?
I'll second myself.
Okay, I have a second. Now we vote on it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Call for a vote.
I call for a vote for the nomination for Mike McMillan as Vice President. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So are we gonna have to wait till we have five here?
I, I would say that we wait. On the Vice, because you cannot vote, is that true, Mr. Brown?
That's correct, I cannot vote.
Yeah.
Unless you guys wanna flip a quarter.
So I believe that, that motion fails and um, then you could, you could ask for a motion on the other nomination or.
Okay, so, well, the motion will fail and we'll continue for the motion for Secretary. And can we come back to the motion for Vice President when Michelle, if she gets here?
I think you can retain that.
Well, Mr. President, what you could do, Mr. New President, what you could do is since this nomination failed, then you could bring up the nomination for Mr. Khan and run it through the course again. And if that doesn't pass, then you could wait for the fifth member of the board.
Okay, sounds fair. Okay, so that motion failed, so um, I ask for nomination. I uh, move that we nominate Mr. Khan for Vice President. We already have a second on that, correct?
No.
No.
Just a nomination?
Just nomination.
Can I say, I'll second that.
I need a second. Okay, I have a second. Okay, all those in favor for Mr. Khan for Vice President, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we're in the same boat. So we'll, we will move forward, that motion has failed. So we'll move forward when Dr. Diaz gets here. And I will ask, I will move on to the nominations for the position of Secretary.
Mr. President, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Can we nominate a person, a board member who was not present?
Um, I would say yes, however, to be fair with Dr. Diaz and her schedule, I would probably ask that she be here just to, to be fair to the board as well, because she may not be able to um, do the duties as required because of her busy schedule. I know if she wasn't that busy, she would definitely do it, and she may still do it. Um, so why don't we just move on and hold that one as well? Does that sound okay, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, so on to um, and I would just like to say, um, before we move on to item number three, I, I appreciate the confidence of all the board members for the position of President, and I know that Mr. McMillan has taken on the position for the last two years because of the transition that we went through last year, and he has done an outstanding job. And his shoes are gonna be really big to fill and I will do my best to, to give, you know, everything that Mike did. Mike goes above and beyond and has gone above and beyond in his own time. He's always looking um, in a positive direction for the board and for the district. And uh, I, I think he's probably one of the best Presidents that I've seen, I'm not just saying that because he's here, but in my last ten years as President, we had some good Presidents, but Mike has really taken a proactive approach to the office of President and made it a difficult position for his predecessor, which is me at this time. I wanna, I wanna thank him for his service and his time and his willingness to serve two terms as President. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also ask for everyone's patience with me just getting to get this role of President. And uh, I would probably yield for, ask for some help for you, from you, Mike. But on to number three, review and approval of minutes. I know everyone's had the chance to review and approve the minutes of our February regular board meeting. Can I have any discussion? Carol asks for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Khan, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It's approved. Um, item B, approval, review and approval of the minutes for work session February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. I will seek a motion.
Do we make a correction first or not?
Do we have any corrections?
Yes, just the next scheduled work session and regular meeting, we just need to change it to next month. It says March eighteenth, it says today, sort of. Yeah, just the date.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only edit I saw.
Any other corrections? Okay, I'll uh, seek a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Montenegro second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Next, consideration and approval of our agenda.
Was that the, the item where you, Mrs. Montenegro, or Mr. President, was that the item that Mrs. Montenegro was, was that what you were correcting?
Editing, mhm, yeah.
Was on the agenda?
Yes.
So that's the only correction, correct?
Right.
And we've already addressed it.
And Mike made a motion and I.
Second.
Second?
So it's, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None. Motion passes. Okay, um, information and presentations, non-action items to the board. Uh, the first one we have on the agenda is Mr. Bruce Ashburn from P and M. Welcome, Mr. Ashburn.
Actually, I'm Paul Royalty with P and M, and I've got Bruce here with me. And uh, one of the things we wanna do is uh, thank uh, the Silver City School System for participating in our energy efficiency programs, uh, commercial energy efficiency programs. And specifically, I wanna thank Barry Ward, who was instrumental in making that happen with us and getting all the lighting and all the schools changed. And uh, to give you an idea, what we use these programs for is to reduce our uh, load on our generators so that we can reduce the number of generating facilities required or actually maybe not require that we have to build new ones in the future. Okay, so we can spend millions of dollars on energy efficiency to keep from spending billions of dollars on a new power plant, and so that's what we're trying to do. Um, the lighting retrofit that we talk about has actually saved one million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and nine thousand watt-hours or kilowatt-hours, okay? So if you take, just imagining that, so to put that in perspective, you're saving enough with this lighting retrofit to power ninety-eight homes for the next ten years. That's pretty significant. And so when we start taking a look at that, uh, we, we put that in kind of a perspective that everybody can understand. And lastly, we'd like to present the Silver City School System with a check for eighty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy cents. And that uh, check is a rebate or incentive of what, a portion of what it costs to actually do this retrofit. So we sincerely appreciate your participation in the program and this incentive or check then is part of it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to all of the other school board members, I, I see all of you have this idea about how you wanna spend this money, but I, I've been in contact with the audience, he's already got a plan. But I, I would just like to say thank you very much for participating in the program. Um, it, it takes a commitment on your side to, to do this because there are some funds that have to be spent in order for you to realize these savings. But the key here for anybody who's ever been in business is, as we were discussing it outside, the, the payback period on this program is about one point two years. Uh, in other words, just over a year, you're gonna get all of the money back that you've invested. And from that point on, it's just total savings. It's one hundred percent money that you go back into educating the people that you serve, the kids.
And to give you an idea, and everybody thinks, well, this is just a one-shot deal, you're gonna save this, these lighting systems have a ten-year life, okay? And the lamps will be put in have a five-year warranty, so you're not gonna be replacing lamps on a regular basis.
Great.
So that kinda gives you an idea.
So one more time, guys, I would really like to, I know you guys get to yell at these guys a lot, but this is a good thing and they really did a good job here, so one more time, give them a round of applause, please.
Mr. Brown, should we get a picture with the check?
That's a great idea, yes.
All this.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, we have Ms. Kim Upwood, Special Education Director. Yes, of course.
Thank you. So what you're getting is um, a draft of a proposal for a position that the district does not already have. Um, it's called a Behavior Specialist. And I wanna back up a little bit and explain what my role has been and how I got to this place where I'm making this proposal to you. So when I was hired, I came in looking at special ed numbers in the district, looking at um, how our numbers have grown over time and looking at ways to help students who have learning difficulties or behavior difficulties stay in gen ed classrooms. We have um, about seventeen to eighteen percent of our students on IEPs in the district, and that's a high percentage. When um, in the first semester, I had five referrals for behavior only from one building. And so I started looking at, um, how are we responding to this need? Certainly, a student needs to be in special ed if they have behaviors that are above and beyond or if they have learning difficulties that are above and beyond. But what I'm finding by working with um, Student Assistance Team Chairman and the teachers who are in these buildings is that they feel under-equipped to deal with behaviors of concern in their classrooms. The state gives us um, a three-tiered system of support. It's a triangle, the bottom of it is our biggest percentage, and that's all kids district-wide. Tier two offers another layer of supports for academics and for behaviors. Tier three is special education. So there's a lot of concern around what happens at tier two. That's the response to intervention piece that concerns me because as Director for Special Education, I need to look at referrals that come across my desk and see if they're good referrals. Do we have all of the components in place that the state is asking us to look at to try to provide interventions in the gen ed classroom before we go to special ed testing? A Behavior Support Specialist, in my view, is someone who would work district-wide, not just with children in special ed, but also classrooms for gen ed students. We have growing concerns in our district, um, we have families who are in distress. We have kids who are in distress and under-equipped to handle social emotional issues. Um, there is anxiety and depression, there is a great need that special education by itself cannot address. And while I want to provide services to all of the kids who really need special ed, I can see that there's great need in gen ed classrooms with kids and with gen ed teachers. If we are looking at thinking outside of the box to some degree, um, Behavior Intervention Specialists, Behavior Management Specialists, possibly a social emotional learning curriculum in the early elementary years could be an answer to help us provide greater intervention. Teachers are busy trying to manage classrooms with fifteen, eighteen, twenty kids. And when you've got two or three who are academically able but not behaviorally able, the level of learning for everybody goes down. And so what I'm proposing with this position is that we help reinforce what teachers already know or need to know to help manage difficult behaviors in their classrooms that do not lead to a referral for special ed services. And as an example, um, I've seen several referrals for kids who have been diagnosed with ADHD. ADHD on its own is not a qualifier, it has to be coupled with other needs. And so ADHD is also presenting behaviors of concern because that's impulsivity, it's a, that's kids who aren't really sure of how to behave in a classroom setting. And so if we are able to enrich what gen ed teachers, the resources that gen ed teachers have, enrich the resources that are in to the general ed classrooms, we may be able to keep kids who are average learners in the gen ed classroom. I um, saw this as an issue and I reached out to other school districts in the state. I talked to Albuquerque Public Schools, Rio Rancho, um, Los Cruces Public Schools. And all three of these large districts are doing some combination of Behavior Management Specialists to address the needs both with special education at high need, like the kids with autism who have really severe behaviors, but also in gen ed classrooms with teachers who really aren't sure how to deal with kids who have impulse control issues. And so I see this proposal as something that can bridge both camps. Um, I'm a proponent of inclusion. I believe that as many of our kids with learning disabilities or behavior um, issues as possible should be in gen ed classrooms because that's the quality instruction that they need to be exposed to. Pulling them out and using um, a lot of segregated settings just denies them opportunities for academic and social growth. And so as I'm looking at response to intervention, behavior is part of what I believe, or addressing that behavior is part of what I believe is a solution to reducing our numbers of referrals. It's not to say we don't have great need in our classrooms and in our district, we do. We have lots of kids on IEPs who receive social work and school psych services. Unfortunately, the loads are large and those providers are working only with kids with IEPs. They're working some in the classroom at the early elementary levels, and at the, at the older grades, they're working one-on-one. Not able, certainly, social work therapists and school psychs are able to do the work of a Behavior Management Specialist, but they're not available because there's already, um, there's already, already great need for their services. So I know that there are budget issues, there are lots of concerns around how to fund something new, but I would appreciate if you would consider um, how this might be able to help us keep or help us facilitate intervention in the general ed classrooms. And then, in the long run, we're teaching kids how to cope socially, emotionally. We're teaching them empathy, we're teaching them how to be a part of the greater community because ultimately, when they leave our doors at graduation, that's back where they're gonna be. They need to be able to deal with their own frustrations and their peers and build social relationships in a way that is more positive than not having had the benefit of being in a gen ed classroom with their peers. What I've given you is kind of an overview of um, the job description, some of the qualifications, and some of the questions as to why or how this might work. I'm open to questions if you'd like to ask me anything, but that's it, kind of in a nutshell.
Thank you, and I, I know this is probably a position that's long overdue in, in the school district and I know we're gonna have to refer to, to Mr. Brown and Ms. McCain because they're the ones that say either yea or nay depending on the budget, but um, any, any questions or comments from the board?
Is, Mr. President, um, so and I see down here at the bottom, the, I guess, the options, contract versus employed. Would, if this person's employed, or I guess if, if they were a contract, do they work K through twelve, or would they be just assigned to primarily elementary level, or?
I think it depends on um, where that need is. Certainly, one person trying to solve all the needs K through twelve would be difficult, but it's a start. Um, I see it kind of as a, a way to grow, it opens the door for what the possibilities might be. Um, I've, um, Albuquerque Public Schools has done a wonderful job of creating positions that serve gen ed and special ed, and they've got, they're creating their own professional development to grow positions from their own staff so they don't have to contract out. Um, right now, we're, we're forced to contract and it's very, very, very expensive. So if this is the way we want to go, um, developing these positions from our own staff would be the most economical way to do it. Can I say start with one and see where we can go?
Or the, is there a, a particular state license, or is, can someone just go, go to uh, I guess a specific coursework or training and, and become certified or licensed to?
So all three districts, districts are utilizing um, licensed, either licensed teachers, special or general, general ed or ancillary service providers. There is an additional layer of knowledge and expertise. Um, there is a way to get this training through um, Relias Online, through um, additional coursework. Um, there are, U and M has a program that will help us begin to supervise um, somebody in this position. And they're finding ways to incentivize so that staff members will feel like if there's an interest, they want to take on some more duties or a different element of duty, they're able to do that through perhaps an extended contract or a longer school day. It can be something that is a certification, it can be something that is a training program. There are, I don't know, probably a handful of um, well-known process um, through Relias, through um, conscious discipline, through um, other universities.
Are there any other districts that are size that have a Behavior Specialist on board, like the one you're describing?
Well, probably we're the smaller of the four, of the three that I talked to, so um, I'm not sure. Demming is trying to do something, but they don't have a Behavior Specialist per se. But they are trying to focus their, their resources on kids who have very difficult behaviors within special education.
Any other comments from the board? Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Mr. Barry Ward, Director of Maintenance. Welcome, Mr. Ward.
Mr. New President. Members of the board, Mr. Brown. Just in sidebar, I'd like to congratulate you on
Thank you.
the commitment you've decided to take on and congratulate Mike or thank Mike for the uh, intense amount of devotion that he put into this for the past several years. And I'm sure it was greatly appreciated by everybody, so thank you. And I particularly would like to appreciate or give you my thanks and appreciation for the amount of courage and devotion it took to flip the switch on doing the light project. Because I think it did, it's just gonna be a big thing for the district in the long run. In, Mr. Brown had asked me to come in this evening and at the board's bequest, but wasn't really able to give me a lot of really, any kind of specific guidance as to what it was anybody wanted to talk about. So I don't have much in the, prepared in the way of a presentation or anything like that this evening. So I find myself in one of those rare moments where I'm a little bit at a loss of words as to what to talk to you about. So if you can give me a little direction, I'll be more than happy to discuss or answer questions to the best of my ability.
Members of the board, any direct questions for Mr. Ward?
I think the spreadsheet that you provide, provided breaking down kind of the projects and the facilities, projects completed, amount of bond money expended on those is, is a nice breakdown and kind of roadmap of where we've been and, and and looking forward to, you know, the work that we're gonna be doing for this next draw this summer, which is primarily gonna be at, at Silver High Campus. Have you got any, are there any figures yet for, for that next draw?
We're still staying right in, in the, in the range of what we wanted to do versus the money that we have, okay? The prints, or the blueprints and permit drawings and specifications and everything are pretty much in the contractor's hand and he is preparing to and has started to go out to formally request quotes and bids from people for various aspects of the work and actually start putting together the hard numbers for the guaranteed maximum price. Friday, they plan on submitting the, all the documentation to PSFA to begin the permitting process. As your, some of you may be aware, all of you may be aware, anything that's $200,000 or more that a school district does has to be approved through PSFA prior to going to CID to acquire permits. Doesn't make any difference what it is, doesn't make any difference if they have funding involved or not. That's just the new state rule. And it's mostly to double check for adequacy standards and stuff like that that we're doing things that the state requires schools to do as far as sizes and room space and tear space and things of that nature. As a little recap, the things that we're looking at on this year's, uh, projects at the high school, first and foremost is our grading and drainage issues at the high school and redoing the parking lots. At the same time, we're looking at finishing out and redoing the sidewalks along Thirty Second Street, which are sort of some there, some not. So we're looking at making that complete. And we wanna replace the fence and redo that area as well. We wanna retrofit or do a facelift to the main entrance all the way around the gym and come up through the cafeteria. And then we have, we wanna rework the entry areas as well. And with the canopies as, you know, Victor had shown you guys pictures of things along that, not, along that line. And that was all included in those renderings that we showed you. And that's kind of the design. We've stuck with that. Everybody seemed to have liked it, so we're staying along that vein of, of appearance. The commons area we're looking at redoing. The restrooms of the commons we're looking at redoing and expanding. And the concession stand. And we're working also towards getting the HVAC systems replaced on the PE complex. And that's kind of the gist of where we're trying to focus this summer. With the other options or the other things we're looking at following through on next summer, which was like the wrestling room and the cafeteria and this, that, and the other thing. So we're thinking about that stuff as well. But with any luck, we're looking at having, we want to have numbers by this time or before next month. You know, have everything pooled in, pick and choose who it is that's going to do things, total it all up and have a, a pretty definitive idea of what that's gonna cost.
All right. Any other comments from the board?
I think again, the, the spreadsheet, and I was looking back through when we had community meetings about the bond and before the bond had even passed. I think a good number of those we, we've, we've checked off, we're gonna check off. I know you and I had a conversation about kind of looking down the future. When the bond question comes up again, do we, do we continue to take this approach of, of kind of a Band-Aid, a little bit for this school, a little bit for that school, a little bit for this school? Or do we go and we say, okay, this next bond is, we're, we're dedicating it to the, this one facility that we're gonna redo the, the entire facility? And, and I think, I think that's a conversation that we can, or a discussion we can certainly continue to have moving forward. And we're, we're still looking, what, two years, maybe a year and a half away from, from that point? But I think that's...
Well, this is my second bond cycle. Back in 2005, we had the first one I was involved in, and now we have this one. And it's being done this year, this, or this time, this, pretty much the same way as it was done last time. And although we get a lot of little things that need to be done, they're like the things that have been problems that get fixed. And then we wait for the next problems to hit these things rather than addressing things in a total, total sense. So on one side of the fence, you can continue to do that and you, you tread water, so to speak. But you never really get to a point where you're, say, bringing a facility up to more modern standards or more modern appearances for the long haul. I think you, I think the way we were looking at it was, if, and Michelle would know better than I, but I think you look at about a five-year period of time before you're clear enough to go out for another bond if you so choose, something like that. Maybe five, six years, something along that line. I, the question has been posed as you described, and I, I think it's one that deserves some serious consideration, is that we look at what it is that has the biggest need and we devoted each bond cycle to totally renovating and redoing and providing each campus with what it needs. And then after the next four or five years, do it again and do that campus. That way, you're not Band-Aiding anything. The stuff is, it's being brought to a more modern standard that both the community, the staff, the students will all benefit from. And I think it's a valid point to consider changing in that direction because we've been doing this one at least the pa, the past two cycles I've been involved in. And from my understanding, it has just kind of always been that way. But, you know, I don't know anybody that hasn't seen, has seen it do, go any differently than that. So I think in order to move forward, I think it would be in the, my opinion is that it would be in the district and the community's best interest to follow that kind of a program. There's a lot of things involved in changing things over that way. I understand that. And, and a lot of sitting down and talking with communities and getting them involved in it as well because they need to understand what's going on there. And their, their consideration needs to be addressed.
Absolutely.
But I do think for the schools themselves and the buildings and the property that we do, do own, in the long run, it would be a much, you'd get a much bigger bang for the buck taking care of things in total versus things in pieces.
And I do think we can bond sooner than four or five years. It seems like after this one, he said that we had bonding capacity freeing up pretty quickly.
Well, this one allowed us to, to continue without a change in, in the taxes.
Right.
Because our, our last payment on the last bond cycle ended this last year.
Right.
And so it was, if you go with status quo, the next one would be, I believe, an increase in, in property taxes.
Oh.
And so that would be a little bit of a harder step.
Right, okay.
Unless we waited until this one kind of worked its, its cycle through, then we could continue, do a continuation as well.
Well, that too is, you know, this isn't coming just from, this isn't just my idea or one person's idea. There's actually professional people that brought this to the table and suggested that we really need to start looking at doing this in this way when we did our FMP. I think Ms. Monan Negro was, was the evaluators of that. So it, it's not just a, a, an off-the-cuff kind of thing. I think professionally, people in the industry look at doing stuff like that as well. I, I think the way that you really, even if you're having to increase the tax rate or whatever, you're talking pennies on the dollar compared to the gain you get. But there again, you need to sell that to people. And I think those discussions, the sooner you start having them about what the district's real needs are and how they really stand and where things are going and what you're going to need to do in the next two, four, five, ten years. You can't wait till ten years, you're at the ten-year point, all of a sudden figure out $10 million worth of stuff spent at the school. You really ought to be thinking about and planning and getting that stuff taken care of ahead of time so that you're, when the things, when the changes happen, you, you can hit the ground running and, and be okay. It's real hard being in my boat or, say, Ben's position when you have these legislative changes coming down the pipe and all of a sudden you find, you just, you've got two and a half million dollars worth of new data stuff that has to happen just so you can provide the services so kids can take tests. You know, it, it's, so if you think about that ahead, then, you know, you're better off. So I mean, that's just another way of looking at it.
Mr. Ward, can you speak to the effects, the, the current approach that the district has been taking? And what it does to the PSFA rankings?
Well, when, uh, PSFA ranks everything by, what they, I describe this for, it, it's a convoluted system that really makes no sense. But in, they, they allocate funds based upon rankings. And rankings are established by ages of equipment set up by, and they follow the architectural and engineering standards for systems. And the newer things are the more negative effect it has on the rankings in relation to acquiring state funds. For instance, and I'm working with PSFA now diligently because they made such a mess of our rankings this time. All the preliminary rankings came out and I basically had to edit and redo all of the F Mar sheets for those campuses and turn them in in hopes that when they go to council on the sixteenth of April, that they will correct those things. But by the FM, by our, by our facilities master plan and by professional evaluators, consider Cliff Schools are a school in most, in most in need. By state rankings, it's the fourth. Something's obviously wrong. You know, see, and, and a lot of what happens is when you do these things, these little onesie, twosie, twosie things, you have less chance of getting state funding to help you. Let's just say, reserve cost fourteen, between fourteen and fifteen million dollars when they rebuilt reserves, reserve school system. Now, there's a thirty-five percent construction cost increase right in it, you know, that, that we're going through right now, so things are more expensive. So let's just say twenty million dollars. Our participation rate is forty-three and fifty-seven. We pay fifty-seven percent if you get an award and the state will pay forty-three. Well, if you can get close to half the money of twenty million dollars, then you really need to only bond ten. So those are the kind of things you have to consider whenever you're looking at that stuff. But when we do these small things, we're replacing big systems of stuff. And it'll take something that could be fifty-two, which is great for getting state funding, and shift it all the way up into two hundred and fifty, which is not great because they don't even look at anything that's above a hundred.
Mr. Ward, are you saying that their evaluation system for facilities is similar to their evaluation system for teachers and, and schools? Their grading system?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, didn't quite catch that.
You said the, the evaluation system was somewhat flawed?
Yeah. Well, some of it was tied into how we did the last bond thing. They have equipment, equipment, they'll always just say, they have their equipment at HB, the HVAC equipment at Jose Barrios, what they have listed down as being changed in 2006. It was put in in two thousand, or one thousand, or some of it was put in as old as nineteen seventy-six. The energy management control system was put in in 2006, but that isn't the equipment. And however and whoever, they have all this new equipment in there and it just isn't right, which has a negative impact on our rankings. But that was going on all over our district. The two worst culprits were the high school and Cliff Schools. With Cliff, the high schools, it's like six hundred and fifty or something, somewhere in that neck of the woods. Cliff was at three hundred and forty-five or something.
In, in all seriousness though, you're, you're saying right now, and that ranking's done annually, is that correct?
It's done annually, yeah. Because it's, it's, the rankings are based upon age of equipment and they, every year, changes. So those numbers that they run through their little formula could change every year because all the equipment ages change every year, or the system changes, change every year.
And the current ranking for Cliff, you say they have all of our facilities there the, the most in need?
Well, in reality, it's the most in need. And architecturally, even when we did our facilities master plan, when it was evaluated by the architects, it was the most in need, in their opinion. Yet the facility's rankings show it as the fourth. So something the state is doing is completely wrong. And what I, what I pose that that is, is they do not have the ages and whatever right on much of anything. And it's been a real struggle in all honesty. It's not like we're just finding this out and we're just doing it. I've been after them from, for this for fourteen years now. And they have the data, they have what it is, and they just never have changed it. But they have changed directors, so I'm sort of taking the approach of we shall go after the new director in hopes that he will take it more seriously and get things changed. And in conversations I've had with him, he seems much more pliable to doing the right thing and he does want it to be useful information.
No, I think that makes sense to, and I don't think it's too far down the road for us either. You know, just a couple of years, we're gonna be through this, this current bond cycle and, you know, like you're saying, if the state's gonna, if our current ranking gonna chip in around fifty percent, it makes sense for us to say, hey, maybe we take this next bond and dedicate it to that facility and...
Well, if, let's just say, just for instance, you wanted to redo Cliff and you wanna take twenty million dollars and you wanna sink it into there. Well, twenty million dollars with forty-three percent participation gives you a lot more money to play with. Rather, rather have, you know, the flexibility of using thirty, you know, and do it that way. But that won't happen with a ranking of four, or three hundred and forty-five, I believe it was, somewhere in that neck of the woods. But if we get it corrected, it's much more likely that it could possibly be in the rankings. You know, so...
So once we get it below a hundred, will it stay there until we do something? Cause what if we don't, we don't have the money?
Until you do something to change it. And maintenance also has a detrimental, one of the problems we have is, is we generally, as, as compared to a lot of places, we do really decent maintenance. You know, we see issues and we take care of them. I mean, my philosophy has always been, don't Band-Aid stuff, fix it. And it's reflected in the evaluations when people come and look at stuff. You know, we take advan, we've taken advantage of a lot of the roofing, uh, programs that the state has had out. They've helped us reading the roofs at Harrison, the high school, La Plata, Jose Barrios, you know, and on and on. Now, that all of a sudden takes a twenty-year ranked system and rather than being beyond its useful life because it's older than twenty years, it is now well within its useful life because it's only two or three years old. So those are... So those are the kinds of things you do. So you have to kind of weigh what you're doing. If you have the opportunity to take advantage of state money to do something like fix a roof that is giving you a ton of problems and causing grief and headache to staff, students, maintenance, et cetera and so forth, you better exercise doing it. It's a flawed system in my mind, but, say a lot of the... Any other comments?
I, I would just like to add that I would like each one of our schools to just, you know, be renovated, just like our neighbors down the road. About every one of their schools have been updated because of PSFA standards. And I just wish we could match what, what they're doing, but I know it's qualifications and everything i- is different. I'm dreaming, but that, that would be so nice to, just to see that happen so we're not having to rely on so many other...
I think it can, but I think we need to change our approach to how we're doing it rather than doing small pieces all over the place. We need to just let things kind of take their normal course, let rankings go where they're gonna go, and then start attacking whole problems.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Next, um, SCEA, Espositos.
Hello.
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 Okay, um, thanks again for being here. Welcome aboard as the leader of the school board and we'll see what happens with the rest of the nominations. We do know that the New Mexico legislative session is over. We're just waiting for finalization on many things before we can move forward with the CBA and, um, the district calendar. Hopefully, um, with SB 31, which asks for, um, more social workers in rural and, um, low income communities, we will find out more, which leads me to my response to Ms. Hopwood. And I emailed the board last night with, um, thoughts and concerns that we had, um, from SCEA about the position. Mr. Brown and Ms. Hopwood also received a similar email and you saw that attached to the email that was sent to you last night. We know that our district needs to be able to help our students. And one of those answers would be to add social workers. We know that behavior therapists or behavior specialists would be a great addition to the district. But we have social workers in our district who are able to do those types of things already. One thing about our social workers is that they are not able to benefit students as they should because their caseloads are heavy. We have one social worker who has 40 or so students that they work with and that social worker is split between two schools. We have another social worker whose work is split between four schools. Our social workers seem to be unavailable for our students because there are not enough of them to manage the 17 or 18% of our students who are in special education. Again, we have social workers who can teach behavior modifications and behavior models, model behavior if their time and caseloads were not so high. We're not saying that this type of modification or this type of instructor is not needed. We're advocating simply for more social workers who can also do many things that this behavior specialist or behavior therapist would be able to do. Social workers look at the whole child. They have a holistic approach looking at their mental health, their home life, their academics, and work with these students on a daily, if not weekly basis. However, because some of these caseloads are so high, social workers have had to adapt. And sometimes they meet with students in a group. Sometimes they shorten their time with these students to 15 minutes. Our social workers are able to help our students when they are able to do it. It's a disservice for our social workers who are here already not to be able to work with their students with the time that each student would need. In looking at job descriptions for the behavior therapist, many stated, especially when working within a school district, that these behavior therapists, these behavior specialists also have caseloads, should and must work with the special education department at their particular school. Should have a social worker counseling background, many of these at a master's level with experience. We urge you to consider, as you are thinking about this behavior therapist position, what one, two, or even three additional social workers would do for our students. Unless you have any questions or concerns, I think that's it.
Any comments or questions for Ward?
Yes, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Okay, moving on, information to the board. Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, members of the board, community members. During the work session, the board and administration devised a plan of how we're going to be working to, uh, help the community understand the need for the SB 9 funding and the rationale for it. We created a plan of how we're going to present it, how we're going to be able to answer questions pertaining to that particular, uh, need for the district. And so that information is forthcoming. And I believe just about everybody that's here now was present for that work session, so I won't take any more time regarding that.
Okay. And item B, the naloxone policy?
Mr. President, members of the board and members of the community. We've been asked by Ms. Leslie Schertz to ensure that we have a regulation in place regarding the naloxone policy. And in speaking to the, uh, attorney for the School Board Association who also helps with the district policies, uh, he, he writes, "Policy JLCD dash R," which is a regulation, it's not a policy, "and is subject to change by the superintendent." "The policy allows the superintendent to circumscribe or limit any medication on campus, and therefore the superintendent can write a regulation pertaining to naloxone." "Below I have provided a two sentence addition to the regulation JLCD dash R. That should satisfy the New Mexico Department of Health need to have their training of a nurse for administration of naloxone as well as allowing the maintenance of naloxone on the campus. Your superintendent may approve this change without board approval, but in accord with policy should make the change information available to the board so they may see that it is written within the policy JLCD for the superintendent to modify." So that is what we're looking at doing. And the addition, the regulation is going to read, "Following the New Mexico Department of Health Standing Order Regarding Naloxone Availability Administration, a school nurse trained by the department may maintain a supply of naloxone and administer same as necessary. The superintendent may authorize others trained to recognize and administer naloxone by recognized authority, access to, and authority to administer naloxone as necessary in the absence of a trained school nurse." So that will be added to the policy.
And I know, uh, another word for it is MRCAN, and that's the training that, for, um, heroin overdoses. And I know that, you know, I know we at Western got trained in that. And, um, it's obviously saved some lives, uh, around the state, more so up north, I think. But, um, I do think it's a, it's a good thing to have because it's just such a, a widespread problem, I think. Anything else from the board? Any questions for Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, by me, I've been asked to share a little bit of information as to the reason why Herschel Schmidt was closed, uh, Thursday the 7th. If I may share that. It was brought to my attention by the principal as well as the director of nursing services that we had several students as well as some staff members that were ill. And rather than it expanding to where eventually the whole district would possibly have to be closed, they asked if they could close that school and it was a day before the spring break here within the district. And they wanted to give the students and staff an opportunity to recover and recuperate from the various illnesses that were taking place. So for example, uh, that Thursday morning, April 7th, I'm sorry, March 7th, 60 students were absent from the school that day. And then later throughout the day, 40 more were sent home. And there were several staff members as well that were, uh, absent as a result of similar, similar illnesses. And so it was a recommendation from Ms. Schertz as well as, uh, Ms. Orman to, that, to go ahead and close the school. And again, based on their area of expertise and Ms. Orman having her ear closer to the ground, so to speak, within her particular school community, uh, I found it was easy to support that request. Also, during that time, custodians were directed to ensure that they had, uh, cleaned, disinfected and sanitized door handles, desks, all these other necessary places that students and staff touch. So hopefully we could eliminate this, uh, from spreading any further. And so that's the rationale for it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No, sir.
Mr. Clough?
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have two informational pieces and then the enrollment update that was requested. First, as was stated in the work session, our next community dialogue, which is our action planning meeting, will be April 3rd from 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock at the convention center. Registration will be starting here shortly. We just finalized the date today with Mr. Terry, so that'll include a group of roughly about 50 to 70 people that'll be breaking down into planning groups on key objectives you want to achieve in career and technical and vocational, such as creating internship programs, um, creating a systemic way of approaching the program implementation. We're looking at meeting the local priorities as well as working with local, local policymakers on funding streams and common practices we might be able to do to make sure we're unified going forward to meet the workforce and economic development needs for the region. So that'll be April 3rd and members of the board are invited to attend. I will send you guys the invitation. And also, as was stated last month to the board, we are continuing our science adoption. But luckily, uh, we have decided to slow that pace down because we have to weed through all the legislation that's coming through with the budget impact and everything else. So we want to make sure we're doing it right. So we will not be asking for a special board meeting or delay the April board meeting. Now I'll let Michelle talk about her piece to this a little later. Uh, so we will look at adopting the new science curriculum in May. That should give us plenty of time to make sure we get all the purchase orders, we make sure we have all the right figures. We know what we have to do according to the new state budget and state laws that can be put in place that affects that. Plus, there are other pieces to our curriculum we have to worry about because there are career and technical ed, uh, professional development pieces and curriculum pieces that are in there that we may have to look at fast tracking and get adopted for next year, looking at some of the pieces of legislation. So we will wait for the science adoption and present it in May to the board so we make sure we have it right instead of doing it quick. So just want to make sure the board is aware of that. Um, lastly, on the enrollment update, if you have some good news. Um, we gotta thank Ms. Hopwood and her child finds immensely because our 120-day count is up because of 17 kids that were found in our child finds for the preschool. We had an increase of 24 from our 80 to 120-day count. So that means we've received seven additional students in our other buildings, but the child find brought in 17. And I have to thank CP because he is a mathematician. Uh, when I presented him the spreadsheet prior to break, we noticed there was an error in the spreadsheet that we were off by 40 students and we had a cell calculated twice. So I thanked CP for finding that for me and I scoured through it and found the cell, found the cell that was being counted. So this is the accurate numbers as of this morning at 11:03 when I talked to Becca Lopez. So as you can see, our, our preschool numbers are up immensely. We've stayed stable and hopefully that's a good sign that we're from the crashes because normally at this time, we're talking about losing 100 students per year. We actually have an increase at our 120-day for the first time in a significant period of time. I have Becca going back and accumulating our five-year data trends for our staffing reports. So next month I can present more information on our trends and kind of do this as a comparison to the last four years. And so you can see what we've done and as Mr. Brown and I talked today, hopefully this stabilization creates more foundation for us to look forward for our financing and programs. And we could have some stability and, and move forward with the educational programs and staffing for our kids and, and students. I'll be happy to take any questions at this time.
So what is the, the total is the 2514?
Yeah, that's our district total at the top. And then we broke it down to each building and then the little boxes are the increase and decrease from the 80 to 120-day count.
And what was last year's?
Um, we were, we were, we were down in the, below the 2490 number, if I remember. I had Becca pulling all those numbers together. So we are up, I don't want to say how much because I haven't seen the actual numbers, but when I talked to Becca today, we are up from what we were. But keep in mind, our, our preschool numbers last year were low. So our preschool's really added to that. So I really will do the building analysis of where we've dropped, where we've increased for the five years for next month when we look at our staffing numbers. So we're just getting into that right now, but...
So you think the 120-day of 18 was around 2490?
It's a little bit less than that according to Becca this morning when I talked to her. She didn't have the exact number looking at it, but I can get that. Um, she was running those reports for me today, but we had some other things she was needing to do for us. I should have the report and I can email that out to the board by the end of this week so you guys can see the comparisons.
Great.
On the trend, Mr. Clough?
Yes.
Are those, the, on the impacted numbers?
Yes.
Are... Is, is there reason, you know, have students left the district or are they just moving from one elementary to another?
Well, what we're starting to see is a trend early in the year, like we explained earlier with the mine closings. Um, we've taken some hits with employment, but now we're starting to see an influx of some people into some areas that we haven't seen before. So we do have some returnees that have bounced to another district and have come back. That's a, that's a typical time, this time of year. Um, but we have seen some new families move in, in the districts. And I think like I, like, um, when I talked to Ms. Hopwood with the, with the child find, that's another thing, it's starting to be publicized, so we're starting to get that. People are looking at coming into our district with that because of the wraparound service we offer and those things. But Stout really got hit, they, they took some students from Jose Barrios. So we do have some inter-district transfers in these numbers, but though that's actual increase of numbers and we're starting to see more students come back. And a lot of them are bounced back based on the withdrawal codes that we're seeing, uh, that they've gone and come back for whatever reason, job, split families, divorce. So we do have some coming back, but we do have some new families moving into the area too.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Clough, those Silver Scholar enrollment, um, this year that wasn't part of our, our SEG funding, but moving forward, it does count towards our, our funding, is that...
Silver Scholar, well, that's what we gotta wait for with the new rural childhood division and the funding stream that they're looking at doing. Um, that could have an impact on our budget, but the way it's funded is, uh, we are spent, we are funded through special ed. So that's actually part of the special ed budget, so that's why we have to do student council where we support sped numbers from them. And the other part of that is the grant funding. When we filled out our grant, uh, for PED at the beginning of the year, we told them approximately how many students, so they calculated what that per student would be. So we have to report to PED. We actually do a grant submission and our sped submission for the 120-day count for them so they know how it's going. So Rebecca reports sped numbers directly to sped and then the grant reporting comes from, um, Mrs. Walden over to the, um, the grant writer, the grant people who oversee it at University of New Mexico. And that's how that is funded. So depending on what happens with the funding formula with, with sped... So depending on what happens with the funding formula with sped and preschool, that could be a difference. But we are having to complete a preschool application again that's due this Friday for funding issues, just in case.
And if I remember correctly, we had capped that at, was it eighty?
We actually, we had, we had capped, we predicted seventy-five, but we capped it eighty to ninety. And we, and by the way, the grant was written, we can't turn any special ed kid away because that's the way their preschools set up. So we couldn't turn anybody that was identified, but we could cap the number of students that were non-special ed in there. So we, I believe it was seventy-five is what we projected with the budget, but we were going up to eighty or ninety in the initial projections, if I remember correctly.
And if we, we got the funding for that, if we didn't have the enrollment for that, we were going to have to give that money back, correct?
Yes. We met our, as you can see, we have seventy-nine, and we met the seventy-five because, again, Ms. Hopwood and Director Walden did a great job of negotiating with PED to make sure we can meet that number, meet that number and be able to do it. And that last child find really did, did some good things for us with that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Ms. Michelle McCain.
Yes, well, I really don't have a lot, since not a lot has been solidified in the legislation. You know, right now, you know, we're looking at the hit that we're, you know, the funding is going to take with them. Then removing the small school funding, that's going to, you know, have an impact. They're talking about other ways of covering that loss, but it's, they're removing the small school funding and then looking at an increase overall to all the school districts. So it's really not going to help the small schools, in addition, you know, above and beyond what they're doing for everybody else. They did talk about the at-risk funding increasing, and so, you know, we'll find some solace there, but I don't know how much until the dust settles. I know they were talking about increasing the teacher minimums again, and that looks like it might make it through. They may not have the incremental changes that they were looking at because they were looking at, I think, a three- or four-year plan to increase the teachers' salaries. And now, I think they're looking at more of a one-year plan based on the money that we have now and going for new minimums for the teachers. And that's all that I'm hearing still in play with the legislation and, you know, what's happening now. So, it's a moving target.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
How many schools do we have that used to receive, or that did qualify for small school funding?
Cliff and Sixth Street.
Cliff and Sixth Street. And that amount that they usually got about?
It's a weighted amount that's in the formula.
Okay.
So it's not an exact dollar amount, please.
Any other comments? Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, the Board of Education, the Finance Subcommittee Report, Ms. Montenegro.
I was absent because I had a son homesick with the flu, so Patrick was there.
Yes, so Michelle and Martha, myself, did meet. Right now, we're about a negative one-point-six-eight percent. The state wants us at about a four. We're still waiting for the PED to approve our bars with our cash carryovers, which we're estimating about a one-point-two million-dollar carryover. So we're just waiting for that to be approved, so we can...
That will put us right in the four percent range.
That's right. But everything remains healthy, and Michelle and Martha are doing a good job keeping our flow. So thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick question. We didn't have credit card expenditures, is that right? So we'll probably get them both next month?
Yes.
Right. Well, actually, January and February were posted early in January, late in January. In consolidation, we did it like January the thirty-first, so we got all of February's in and January's in. So it was actually, I'm trying to get the catching up from being down one person, so...
Thank you.
Anything else? On the Direct Committee Report, we did not meet. We're waiting for the finalization of funding from the legislature regarding the security guards. I have not heard nothing. Mr. Brown, have you?
No, sir.
I, I think we're going to wait a little bit, and I think with the committee, if, if we don't hear anything, then I would ask that we move forward with the hiring of the two security guards because we've hired one security guard. And we had originally planned to hire, as a board, three security guards this fiscal year. And what we're waiting on is for additional funding from the state, which we have not heard from as of yet. But if we do hear from them, then good. If we don't hear from them, I would ask that we move forward with the hiring of the two additional guards. And then again, you know, more funding the next fiscal year as possible, so that every school has at least one security guard. We haven't met because there's, that's all we've discussed is security guards. But we will probably meet before our next monthly meeting and discuss funding and any other issues that come up in the school. I have, I'll stand for any questions.
One of the things that we'll need is an idea of what the cost of the arming of the security guards is going to be.
Right.
Because, I mean, the salary and benefits, that's easy to calculate. Those unknown numbers and what the expectation is that we'll need to be able to address.
I know Real Rancher School District recently went to arm security guards, so they may not have to reinvent the wheel, just maybe pick their brain a little bit. Next on the agenda, and I'll, I'll go to Mr. McMillan with the board goals. For that was the board president.
Yes, Mr. President, I don't have any new information on board goals for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
What I would suggest is potentially, maybe if we've got time during a work session, that we try and finalize those.
Okay, great. All right. So I'll, I'll, I'll still stay with you. Do you have anything as a board member? Comments?
Do you want to go to...
I'll start with you.
Do you want to go to comments now, or, or number two there?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see number two. I apologize. Let's move on to the Excellence in Student Achievement Award nomination.
Mr. President, if I may, um...
Yes, please.
I believe we have in our packets three candidates for this award, and they're, they're identified by A, B, and C. And I don't believe we received any others since, since these three were added. So, Mr. President, I think for this item, and I'm looking for if it's listed in our action items, or if we need to take action on it, nomination.
I think it's listed as listed as action items.
Okay. Perfect.
So we can take action on that, and we get to the action items.
We get to the action items, yes, sir.
Any further comments for the nominations?
I don't have any.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Next, we board comments, and I'll start with you, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Flores.
Thank you.
I look, look forward to, to working with you. I know in my two-years' time, I appreciated working with everybody on the board and still didn't get some procedural things right, but after two years, I'll, I'll help you out as much as I can in that, that front. But I guess I've, I've got a number of comments this evening. One, I wanted to, and I didn't do it earlier in the meeting, but thank Mrs. Flores and the S H S Foods Lab for providing the meal again tonight. If you all didn't get an opportunity to get some food over there, please help yourself to the food. So thank you to her and her class for providing that. Hope everybody had a good spring break. Congratulations to a number of winter sports that, they're, they're now wrapped up. We had a number of basketball teams that finished this last week and didn't get the goal they were, they were seeking, but played in the tournament and I think played very well and represented our district well. So congratulations to them and their, their parents and their coaches. As mentioned a couple of times earlier, the legislature finished up Saturday at noon. Thanks to our legislators for the work they were doing on behalf of the district. From what I guess gleaned from going through the bills amended many times over, that our, our teacher salaries are going to be, the minimums for level one is going to be forty-one thousand, for level two is going to be fifty thousand, and level three is going to be sixty thousand. I think that's what was, what's being sent to the governor. As I mentioned during our work session, from what I understand, she's not going to be vetoing much. But it's yet to be seen. I think she's got till April sixth, is it? Or fifth to, to sign everything into law, or it gets, or veto it, or it gets pocket vetoed. So I think that's good. One of the things I, I don't know is there is a six percent increase as well. My question is, is, you know, do we go to those levels and then they get a six percent increase? My understanding is that, that those new entry level amount, minimums will go into effect next year if it's signed into law. But I don't know where the six percent increase comes into, into play into that. One of the things that, that us as a board and administration will, will have to look at as well is that six percent increase is for classroom teachers, for principals, and for those that have direct classroom instruction. So both licensed and unlicensed staff. So that would cover our teaching assistance and such. But it doesn't cover a lot of other folks, like our receptionists, our secretaries, our central office staff, our custodians, our maintenance folks. There's a lot of other people that, in the, in the bill that was sent to the governor, it was very specific on who was getting the six percent. And there was a number of folks that, that are not included in that that we'll have to take into consideration on how we can move forward with our operational budget because that's something else that we'll just have to maybe look at a couple scenarios on, on how we can move forward. The other thing I didn't, I couldn't find in there was number of school days. I heard a lot about school days were increasing, but I didn't see anything that was specific that said it was ten days or five days, or what was actually sent to the governor. We talked a little bit about small, small school funding. The election bill did, did pass, as I mentioned earlier, H P four oh seven. I was waiting for some communication from the attorney that advised us. Have not received that, but as soon as I get it, I'll, I'll share it. Capital outlay, outlay. We had a number of requests, and from what I'm hearing, we received a fifty-thousand-dollar request for vehicles. Certainly not everything that we, we had asked for, but it's better than nothing. Also, this last week, I made a visit out to Cliff Schools on Friday. Was invited out to meet with a parent out there, and so I, I went out there and, and met with the parent, met with Mr. Thompson a little bit. Also got to check out the new gymnasium floor. Looks very nice. But was very impressed with the fencing that's up front on the Cliff Schools now. I think that looked very nice and kind of what I envisioned our other schools' fencing, security fencing looking like. So I had a good visit out there, and I think that's it. That's, that's enough.
I appreciate it. Thank you. That's a lot of information. Good information. Ms. Montenegro.
It's, it's kind of embarrassing to go after him, right?
Yes.
Again, Mike has been just an amazing leader. He's been on the board since I've been on the board, and I have just really enjoyed working with him, learning a lot. He's got huge shoes to fill, so, but I know that you can do it, Eddie, so we thank you for your leadership and stepping up. I think I remember this from last year, but whoever did the calendar, I think Cat will agree with me, we love spring break right after spring forward, right? So the kids can get adjusted to waking up. So whoever did that, we really like that. Cliff, I know you guys have one more week. Tell your calendar committee to get their acts together, right? But this school year is just flying by, and I, when I hear the, the pay increases for teachers, I just am so encouraged that our state is really recognizing how important it is that we pay the people that form our future. You know, they're forming the little minds of all of our future doctors and scientists and, you know, everything. And it's just so important that those teachers know what an amazing contribution they make to society every single day. So kudos to our teachers and to our legislators for paying the teachers what, what they deserve, so...
Thank you. Mr. Khan?
I just wanted to thank Mike for, you know, being a leader to the board the last couple of years and want to wish Eddie good luck. I just wanted to just also reiterate, you know, just I continue going door to door, just letting my students know about the S B nine. They did ask for some information, but they're more worried about tax increase, which I've assured them that there's no tax increase. So I told them as soon as I got some type of flyer that we would, I would go by and, and give that to them. I am in a couple other organizations, and it was, just stuck out to me because in the organizations that I do, they do sponsor scholarships. And it just stood out to me a little bit that last year, there, in the LULAC organization, there was only four to five seniors that applied for the scholarship. Years before, there's been between five to ten, twelve student seniors applying for the scholarship. So they're starting to see a decrease in scholarship applications roll in. I did know Mr. Baca did take the scholarship applications to the high school. He took some to Cliff and other schools in the area to see if there's a, a big amount because they do, you know, gain interest for our students. And I just don't know where the, where things are not getting connected there to the students on applying and, and going from there. So I just want to encourage our counselors to, you know, let our seniors know that there's money out there and, and take it from there. Like I told my kids, the end of the school year is approaching. I can't believe it. I'll just hang on and continue up until me, and then... And that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. The only comment I have is you're right. It is ending quick. My son told me yesterday, Dad, there's only nine weeks left. Wow, nine weeks. But again, I too would like to, on a different note, I too would like to thank Mr. McMillan for his leadership. It was above and beyond what I, what I've experienced in the past. And hopefully, I can continue a portion of that. But the pay increases that were given out by the legislature are very well-deserved for teachers because I, I think being a teacher is a special calling. And, you know, a couple of us have, have wives as, as teachers and, you know, preaching to the choir when I say there's so much work that's done during their off-time, and, and there's no compensation for it, but it's love for that type of work. And thank God for all the teachers, because it's a, it's a tough job. But that's all I have. Next on the agenda is our open public comments, and I have one person, Mr. Trubal Williams. Welcome.
Members of the board, I appreciate you taking the time to visit with me. I'm not much of a public speaker, but it's going to be hard to follow. You did a very good job. I'm born and raised, I was born right here, silver raised at Cliff, okay? After high school, left traveling, moved back, wanted to raise my family at Cliff Fine School. My mother was the secretary of school all through my years. I retired, you know, when I retired from there, she did. And my wife now works at the school this year. And my wife now works at the school this year. Anyways, I, I would like to wish Mr. Flores congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
President. And Mike, I would like to say you've done an excellent job. I was the parent to contact Mike last week with some matters and he came right out and visited with me and we talked for probably an hour and a half. Nobody got mad. It was good, just a good visit. I, I hope I got to open up a few items. But anyways, with that said, thank you again. I have a few items I'd like to talk to about Cliff. I believe I put on mine for the reason administrative policies that we have. Currently right now, approximately ten percent of our staff's on admin leave at Cliff. Sounds like a pretty big number. It's not. That's two, okay? And I'm talking our, our licensed teachers. And these are all my counts. Now, this is guaranteed, I'm guessing from my counting that there's twenty licensed staff members at Cliff. So, and two of them are on leave. One of them, both of them have over twenty-five years of service at Cliff. One of them taught me. The other one came in about a year after I went through the second grade class. So, you know, it's a long time. They've been to school then. It was brought to my attention that I was looking for one of them the other day, a little kid basketball. When I was there watching my sixth grade kid play basketball. She's a grandmother, has two little granddaughters and a grandson that's in my son's class. Last year he gets to play basketball. She wasn't there because she's on admin leave, okay? My understanding is you're dressed, you have to get on admin leave, you're dressed not to contact the school, you can't go to the school, you can't participate at the school, you can't do anything at the school, okay? It's fine, Danny. Admin leave, I looked it up, something along the lines of admin leave, the purpose of it is to perform an investigation and come to a conclusion about the situation and how you're gonna handle it. And I understand you have to put people on that. That way you can have them address and see, you know, and get their own opinions, everybody's opinion. But the whole point is to come to a conclusion, right? This lady, you get to watch her sixth or eighth kids last year, a little kid basketball, has been on admin leave since December twentieth. That is a long time, it's been going on three months now, right? Both teachers were brought in on a non-contract date to be put on administrative leave. They weren't even at work that day and they were called in to turn in their keys, okay? Admin leave is a great tool. I used it with my crew a while back, suspended six people. I had the investigation complete within two days and it was a whole lot more serious than what Rumor Mill has that it is at Cliff Schools. I would like to address that there's been three people that have been put on admin leave that I'm aware of at Cliff Schools in the last couple of years. All of them had twenty-five years plus of service. Seems to me that there's a pattern establishing that if you're willing to, if you're kinda stuck in your ways and not willing to conform or bend over or whatever, that they just put you on admin leave hoping that you'll retire until, and that's what I'm seeing from it. Again, the one teacher that since the twentieth, and maybe it's the nineteenth again, you know, that's all privy information and I'm not privy to any of that. That's just what I've seen. That's a long time to be on admin leave for an incident, whatever the incident was. I would like to stress and encourage the board members for you guys to talk to the, the people of the school. Talk to your teachers, talk to your staff, talk to your administration, see what you need to do. I know everybody's worried about people suing now, but we put people in place to make administration decisions. You know, when you're the boss, remember the old saying, the buck stops here. Sooner or later, we're gonna have to end you and make that decision if the buck stops here. And if the school district gets sued because of it, because whatever it was, right? That's fine, but we shouldn't be forcing these quality, experienced teachers out by putting them on admin leave because we know they're eligible to retire and they're probably just gonna do it anyways. One of those teachers, the one that has been on admin leave since December twentieth, is my understanding that she was nominated for the Who's Who's of Teachers. Now, I guess that's a pretty big thing, huh? And that was just this year. And then this is my understanding, she was just given a five thousand dollar bonus from the state for something because her kids did such a huge improvement on their testing scores. Now, and then this lady's been on admin leave for three months and doesn't know if she's ever gonna get to go back and teach. Doesn't even know if she's gonna get to watch her kids. A little kid track meet's coming up too here in April, so. I would strongly encourage you guys to maybe help people reach a decision on that. So whether she's fired or hired or whatever, she can go watch some grandbabies of hers. And then the other teacher has a kid in high school, you know, is he, is she gonna get to go do that? Go to his events and stuff like that? Or does she have to be out on admin leave? That's, and that's about all I have to say about them. And that's what I'd like, I'd really like to encourage you guys to take a hand and go through there and, and try to expedite these processes. One thing that I did notice, I underlined something, well, and then read another deal in there that we're supposed to follow the chain of command before we come and speak to you guys on the notes for one that we fill out there.
Unemployed.
Uh-huh.
Only unemployed.
Only employees.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I, I have talked, you know, to the higher ups in the district before and, and I've been told several times on different matters that, well, our attorney advises us to do this, or our attorney advises us not to do that. And then we're not making decisions about matters. An attorney's there, in my opinion, not to prevent us from getting in trouble. We need, as the admin and the people running this district, need to be able to make the decisions ourselves in a knowledgeable manner that we're not gonna get in trouble. And by golly, if we do mess up and make the wrong excuse, then let's use our lawyers and use them for what they're for. That's what they're there for. That's all I have. Anything from you guys?
Alright, too. Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you guys. Thank you.
May I respond, Mr. President?
Yes, of course, Mr. Brown, please.
I appreciate that. Mr. Williamson, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
Great, appreciate that. One of the most frustrating parts of, of being in the educational administration positions is we have all of the information that is available regarding any particular situation. Community members tend to have a slice of the pie. You don't have all of the information. The particular situations you're talking about, it's out of administration's hands. It's not up to us as to when these folks will be able to come back or not. That's as much as I can say. So again, if I were in your shoes, I'd probably stand there saying the exact same thing, the exact same thing. But you've got to understand that there's more layers to this onion than just what you see up front.
Understood. Can I respond now?
Yes, sir.
So agreed, there is a million layers, right? And I don't know, I mean, in fact, I called one of the members and said, oh, I'm not talking about because I was told I couldn't talk to community members during their, right? So I gotta think about, well, Cliff's a small town, so I heard one of the incidents is one of the children. You know, who the child was that this supposedly incident happened or whatever. I called that child's mother because I grew up with her and I just said, hey, what's the story here? And that, that one's been two weeks. Okay, go on, not two weeks, I'll think quiet. I asked her, I said, what's the deal, you know, here, can you tell me, whatever? Because I'd like to know, because the morale at our school is so bad right now amongst the teachers. I mean, it's a bum place. You walk in there, they're not liking it, they feel like they have no backing for whatever. And the good teachers are gonna do what they're gonna do. And then if they don't have any backing, because there is gonna be parents that are gonna get mad. People don't, it's not like when I was raised, you know, everything's changed. And they've gotta have the backing. But with the layers of the onion that we're discussing, she told me she hadn't even been contacted about it, the mother having it. So, and, and I did follow, you know, that. So I mean, it's just, I, I feel like I don't know where it's getting out of the hands at that, that we can't make a decision on these matters. And then the other thing that we talked about, everybody's always talking about the budget and the money. You know, how much have we spent on substitute teachers and bringing them in, you know, and stuff like that? And I, and I will tell you this, because I know this for a fact, that one of those classes that they have went through, two other licensed teachers that can't handle those little hootigans that are in that class. It's an army class. But this teacher's done good and they've excelled this year and one parent's children get mad, whatever, and then she's out. So that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, sir.
It's hard to not get any details on anything.
It's okay.
Thank you, folks.
Well, it's the same with us. We can't go into any details either.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, action items. I mean, may need a little help here, Mike, but. So under a consent agenda approval of, do we do them all at the same time? Okay.
Do one, one A, B, A through E?
One A through A. One A, one, A through E. Financial through conflict of interest disclosures. So any, any discussion?
I'm seeking approval for checks written in February in the amount of two million nine hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. We have a budget adjustment request, we just got a letter for the New Mexico Autism Project. So I'm asking for approval of the bar for that and that is in the amount of seven thousand, seven thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars. We, on our awards of bids and proposals, we had a bid for our GW Stout Parking Lot project. We only had one respondent that was Southwest Concrete and Paving for ninety-seven thousand two hundred. So I want to ask for approval of that bid to be awarded. And then we had one donation that we received for SHS Cheer Team coming from Silver City Moose Lodge for five hundred dollars. And so for all of these items, I am seeking approval today.
Thank you.
Ms. McCain, is, may I, Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is it three donations?
I have the five hundred dollars.
And then Freeport, there's.
There's more.
It's in that, if you click on that, just scroll down in that? Just scroll down.
Oh, okay.
I see there's three.
Ah, the matching funds grants. We have the Science Olympiad for Mr. Nolan. And then Science, well, the Science Department for Mr. Nolan for another two hundred and fifty dollars. The STEM group, they're the ones that are doing the robotics.
Yeah, robotics.
Two hundred and fifty dollars for them and then general support for, I guess, the, the high school, in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for matching funds.
Okay. Seeing that, I will entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Miss Montenegro, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. President, just a question on the bid for, that's for the Stout Parking Lot, is that correct?
It's the second phase. It's a DOT grant that Barry had, did the application for. It's kind of on a fast pace because we have to get everything through and done by June thirtieth in order for the award to be concluded this year and, and finalized. If we don't get everything done, then we will not be, receive their matching.
Very well, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, transportation.
I have nothing for the board this evening, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Um, under item B, consideration and approval of the Excellence in Student Achievement Award nomination.
Mr. Brown, or Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
No, thank you. I don't want the president.
I would move to, for a selection of, I guess, candidate B.
Candidate B?
In the nominations, I would make a motion to select candidate B.
Okay. And that's from Mr. Yurcic, correct?
Yes.
Alright. So I have a motion to select candidate B for the Student Achievement Award?
I'll second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Motion passes. Let me just scroll up again. Okay, item C. Consideration and approval of the Behavior Specialist Position for Silver Consolidated Schools. And that's the position that Ms. Hopwood presented for. Before we move on, is this something that we have the budget for? I mean.
Well, now when the dust settles, I mean. To, to add another position is.
Yes.
That's what he's asking.
Yeah, to add another position, because we don't have a position for this right now, right?
Right. And we, and we really don't have, like, set in place the salary that we're gonna pay this person and, and, you know, so, I mean, it depends on what, you know, how it finally evolves, you know, into a position. Because if it's a twenty-five thousand dollar position as opposed to a hundred thousand dollar position, you know, all of those things have to be considered.
Should all those things be considered before we approve the position?
I don't know that it's possible, you know, I mean, we can set that, until we know the credentials of the person who's, you know, applying for this or, or, you know.
My only concern is that we don't, we don't have a salary, we, we don't have a, you know, like you said, the credentials of what's required for the position. Me, I'm reluctant to approve a position that we don't really know a lot about, but maybe I'm out of place here.
I would move that we table it. She would be going to the budget, the spring budget meeting next week. Maybe they could work on what that would look like.
Until we get some more information? Okay.
Mr. President, I would, I would agree. I think we'd need to do a little bit more information gathering. It sounds like maybe there's a couple of different options. Of course, we are presented with, with one option of, of a contract versus an employee option. But it sounds like maybe there's some other
Sure.
options that will help.
I think other options, two are the social workers.
Right, right. And I think a thorough investigation or discussion on potentially adding some folks that maybe, maybe they need, maybe they have an interest in the area and they can get this additional training or certification. And maybe that's a, I mean, just another option or another route for us to look at, help filling that void. As opposed to just one, one single person, which may grow over time, but I, I just think we need a little bit more time to, to look at it.
Agreed. So will you entertain a motion to table?
I did.
Okay, we have a motion to table. And Miss Montenegro, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion has been tabled. Next on the action item is letter D. Consideration and approval of the Silver Consolidated School Board Goals.
Mr. President, I would move to table that item again until we have additional data or additional discussion on that topic.
I have a motion to table. And Mr. McMillan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, but Miss Montenegro, any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling item D signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion has been tabled. Next, number eight, future meetings and proposed agenda items. I just skip that and go to open public comments again? I gotta discuss every one of them.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have any open public comments.
I know.
We need to discuss that region eight meeting.
Yeah.
Who's going?
I just saw that right there. So the region eight meeting is coming up in Deming. And I know, I know for sure Mike put up for it on the email.
I did.
Ashley. Okay, and I did as well.
And Mr. Brown's.
Mr. Brown.
And Dr. Diaz at Paul, she's pretty sure she's gonna volunteer.
Okay.
So all of them? Mm-hmm.
And that's your next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
Is it five thirty? About five thirty, that's what I usually do.
Five thirty starts?
We all just drive together? Mr. McMillan, you need to drive?
Depends on who's driving.
Okay, agreed.
You're gonna have to take two more spare timers.
Yeah, we can, we can walk if we get a flight. It's only Deming. Okay. And of course, the school law conference coming up in Albuquerque and the leadership retreat, RDO so July twelfth, thirteenth. And the annual convention, Embassy Suites, December sixth and And the annual convention, Embassy Suites, December sixth and seventh. Okay, we're at a, at the, a portion of our meeting where we have our second open public comments. Mrs. Hernandez, do I have anybody? Okay, there's no further public comments. Um, item ten, executive session. Do we need to go into executive session?
Just for a few minutes, very brief. Shouldn't take too long.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, Ms. Hernandez, will you take a roll call?
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ashley. Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz? And Mr. Flottis?
Yes. Okay, we will move into executive session.
Mr. President, she just needs a time, I believe it's eight o'clock.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.